All right, call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, October 17th, 2017. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? All right. Oh, right under the wire.
I'm just starting to talk to this guy.
No problem.
No problem.
It's so hard every time.
We're just gonna do the boring stuff anyway. Um, planning board minutes for October 3rd, 2017, did everyone get a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and uh, let's see, was everyone here? Chat wasn't there, all right.
I motioned to approve the minutes from October 3rd. I had no changes.
Second is?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Chat abstains. All right, moving right along.
Can I have point of order? I'm just curious.
Yep.
No Amanda today?
No Amanda, so.
We gotta go slow.
Talk slowly.
You gotta go slow.
Small words.
(laughing).
If you can abbreviate anything.
The minutes will probably not be as robust.
Jim, lol, that's okay. Uh, no ANRs?
No ANRs.
All right, so new business Kimberly Scribner, thirty-three and a half to thirty-five Union Street Site Plan Approval. Someone here to speak to that?
Come on up to the podium.
Introduce yourself and give us a little rundown of what's going on here.
Uh, I'm Zach Langlois. I am Kim's business partner, um, and we plan to just open a small restaurant, cafe, bistro type deal, um, serving breakfast, lunch, and possibly grow into dinner up on Union Street next door to Snap Fitness there. Um, yeah, I mean, we plan on so- what? Yeah, we had a plan submitted, um.
You have multiple, I think.
So the plans, yeah, so the plans show a couple different things, right? And you mentioned there's a few different options. Is there a specific one that you're going with now, or?
Yeah.
For the, to the back? Is that the plan, the back parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Right, so, it said I didn't have, did not have anything with the backyard.
Yeah, I didn't notice a patio plan either.
Yeah, I didn't have the patio plan either.
And the hard copies.
It's not on the.
It's not on the hard copy.
It's not in the electronic version that was sent.
Not in the electronic version, no.
All right, here.
Well, that might make it easier anyways if you can come over here and show us all which one it is that you guys are.
Uh, oh, sorry.
Well, there's seven.
Oh, all for the back?
Seven, yeah.
Okay.
So there's option one, two, three.
Get my stuff out of the way so I can lay it out.
This is unfortunate because we've got members of the public that are here to see this, so, um, five. Maybe there's five? I thought there were seven.
I thought the notes said seven too, but you guys are looking at?
So, it's having the seating starting here and maybe growing into the full seating here. The only difference is these dumpsters are gonna be in this back corner, far away from.
Okay, so the building is this front part here?
Yep, yep.
Both sides, right? Thirty-three and a half on thirty-five. It's gonna be one consolidated space, is that right? Is it right now, or do you have to do that work?
They're in the process.
Yeah, okay. So then?
What's this? Right. You're saying you might expand into this. What is that now?
This is, um, it's gonna be, it's is open, yes, this is gonna be patio.
Okay, so the question is whether it's gonna be half patio, half parking, or all patio?
It will, there won't be parking here.
Okay.
It's either gonna be half patio.
Empty.
And empty, yes. Or full patio.
So right now, this grass here, according to the map, according to Google, is just a big grassed area. So your plan is to turn that grassed area into some parking?
Yep.
And then add in some sort of six, six to twelve tables, starting with six, you say, and maybe even expanding under to twelve?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is, um, what option are you looking at over there?
Um, we're looking at option, let's say option two and, two and three, like.
What's the difference between one and two, though?
The configuration of the patio is different and the configuration of the parking is different on every single one of those. So the front part is, is the same.
Yep.
The back is different on every single one of those.
You guys wanna come look at these, or you?
Which impacts traffic flow and pedestrian flow. And that's what the board needs to be looking at, is how those two pieces interact in that back area.
So. Permeability of the surfaces matters as well. This is grass. If you wanna pay that.
It's grass, what we're gonna do, um, this is all gonna be stamped concrete.
Okay.
And then this will be paid for parking.
Stamped.
I know it's hard, but can you guys speak up so the other people here can know what's going on?
Yeah, maybe, maybe he actually can.
Yeah, I think now we can look at these. If you guys go back to the podium, then we can ask you some questions about it. So, uh, is it fair that either way you wanna have that, um, let's say you went for the larger, full patio, you would still have that dedicated walkway in the middle?
Yes.
That's what I'm gathering, so, so option.
This one, I'm sorry, so in option two with the total, it shows a walking area on the right side, so you'd be walking around in.
I see.
Option one just has the walkway through the middle.
I'm guessing that's the walkway.
Option three is basically there is no, there is no, so it's just walkway across the.
Here, let's pass these to down here to these guys.
So, structure on the front.
And do you own the entire backyard? So it does, it's not, it's not an issue that you're putting tables behind the Chamber of Commerce?
No. Arthur owns the back lot also.
How many tables?
There's like about twelve, twelve. So what? Where's your trash gonna go?
In the back corner.
And is that fenced in?
It's, there's nothing fenced in yet. We do plan on putting, um, some sort of patio fencing out there.
And the trash can be fenced in too, if it, if need be, yeah, wherever it is, definitely.
So how many seats or tables are gonna be inside the restaurant?
Uh, there is. Five times four. I believe that there's twenty-five or twenty-seven total seats inside the, inside the restaurant.
Okay.
So that's, I think there's four or five, um, two tops with a long bench along one side of the wall, and then there's two, um.
It's up on the screen.
It is up on the screen, yeah, there's, it's eight booths and two, two tables.
Yep, so I can kinda.
You got a four topped and then, one, two, three, four, five, six, you've, six, that probably can accommodate four with the bench, right? Six.
Yeah, four with the bench.
Four would have seats actually there, I think.
Have you seen this? Can you look at these?
Doesn't seem the electronic file matches the paper version.
Yeah, the electronic file was differently, it seemed like there might be some.
Sorry, my bad. I should've, I should've double checked.
But the dining plan is on A zero, sheet A zero?
Jim?
Um, which has, it looks like, um, seven tables for four tops, and then one table for a two top, plus two tables for three seats. First twenty-eight, plus six is thirty-four, plus two is thirty-six people.
Does that sound right to you guys?
Yeah, and if that has to be scaled to three seats, then that's definitely.
And in this design, um, you have a doorway leading back past the kitchen storage to a back doorway, is that the access to the back deck area that you're proposing? So that's a public area with this.
There's one entranceway into the back kitchen, and then we have knocked out a wall on the dining side to go outside.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, that one's gonna be.
So they can go in and out that area?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. So you're, so if I'm, if I come in the front, do you, and you street and I order?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, this is a totally different plan.
Yeah.
I have a totally different plan.
Makes it a little confusing.
So that's completely different.
What plan are you looking at? Is this the?
The one that you sent to me in the email.
This A zero is different than that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I have basically eight tables in what is the old nail salon, and then I have two, two small tables in the.
Okay, yeah, so this is a different.
Oh, yeah.
This is a completely different plan.
Yeah.
Here, take my entire file.
Give us the total, sir.
So this is all kitchen on this side, thirty-three and a half. Chet and Harry should have the right versions, 'cause I photocopied the hard copy.
Okay, I see, so.
No, thirty-three and a half is the address for kitchen.
Thirty-two.
So there's thirty-six.
And so a customer going through can go straight through the dining area and not have to cut through the kitchen area?
Yep.
And there's gonna be, they're both gonna be handicap accessible also.
Separated by the, um, nail salon and cartlages wall is gonna be our, our separating wall there.
Okay.
And then the front counter is gonna be right up here. People order here, um, sit down if they like. Some stuff will be short ordered at the counter, and then some, some stuff will bring to their tables from the kitchen.
How many employees do you anticipate will be there at any one given time?
Wanna go back over to the?
At any one given?
Get those on the, on the record. Thanks, Chris.
Uh, any one, at any given time, I would say there could be, um, three to six employees on, um, depending on, uh.
Is that on the time of day, or?
Yeah, depending on what time of the day. Lunch rush is definitely gonna be what we're aiming for, uh, and early dinner, um, and hopefully we can grow into a dinner, a dinner crowd as well.
So those people that will work, say, three or four hours, and then they're gone?
Uh, not necessarily. They could come in and, and work the mornings, the breakfast shift as well, so they could be.
So that would be total six employees?
Um, yeah, but.
At most.
Yeah, at most. But someone could come in and work at eleven to four, yeah, yes, sir, yep.
So it could get staggered.
Yep, yep.
Is this, is this downtown?
Downtown business, yes.
Yeah. Is it grandfather parking wise, because it's right on the.
Yes, well, so the building age defines it, so that building is old enough to, to have the exemption for parking.
Our calculations, we don't.
So we're not, still looking at pedestrian and vehicular traffic and movement.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, in my opinion, in that back area, because there's several options, there's people sitting back there, there's people that, I mean, there's parking spaces that are shown, there's, you know, so how that parking traffic flow's gonna work, and how's that gonna relate to people coming in and out of maybe that patio?
Right.
Are they not coming out the patio, or are they just coming in out their front door? You know, I think that that's really in this situation what the board needs to be kinda focused on, is how those two modes of.
Yeah, we'll have to figure, well, how many parking spaces are you figuring to have back there?
I think at most there was seven.
Seven. Well, maybe one, two, three, four, four, and then five, six, seven. But they're saying, they're counting these three that.
That you've said you don't wanna have, right?
Where that, where that part of the patio is gonna be, or may or may not be.
So part of that parking may be for employees?
Yes.
Okay. And that, does that parking lot have two entrances, or is it all coming on that one side?
There's, there's Union Court and then the High Street.
Oh, yeah, that's right. High Street, yeah.
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't put a, fit a car through there with the dumpsters in the, in the way, so you have to move the dumpsters.
So it's here.
So it's just really Union Court, the way this is currently laid out.
Well, the right way.
Well, yeah, but you couldn't drive a car through there, there's not enough room.
We can all drive.
Well, if you put dumpsters there, you can't.
Seven feet, nine inches, right there.
'Cause there's literally only seven feet, and a typical car is, you know.
You will need the seventeen.
Traditionally more than that, you're gonna have a car accidents with that one parking spot, right next to it.
Cause there'd be no two-way traffic there.
Okay.
Better off not even having any traffic flowing in.
Is there access to the back, there's a parking lot behind it. Is that, is there access for, for customers to use that back parking lot, if this currently exists?
Yeah.
There is access for that?
There is access for it, there's.
Yeah, I just don't know, like, we haven't.
You don't have an arrangement to?
Yeah.
Who owns the property or anything and asked.
Cause I think Mike Superson owns that.
Okay.
From Big E's.
Well, yeah, that's Big E's.
Um.
Yeah, the main reason for that was we have a fire hydrant right out in front of our unit, so we wanted to offer customers a couple exclusive spots to get in and get out from the restaurant.
Yep.
One thing that influences the traffic a little is your hours. What are your intended hours of operation?
Uh, we're planning on staying probably, um, six-thirty or seven o'clock in the morning till, um, uh, four or five in the evening.
And is this, I, I was confused about, is it, is it bakery and a bistro? Is that how it was presented?
Yep.
So are you, are there any concerns about if this is?
It probably has nothing to do with our jurisdiction, but it's, I'm just curious, about having Smaller than right across the street?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we, uh, we have discussed it, and we think we can be two separate entities and kinda still coexist and.
How?
Yeah, different style of bakery, honestly. Um, we're gonna be kinda shooting for the old school, come in, get the big Cinnabuns and, and baked goods like that, and, um, I think they're more targeted towards a, we're gonna have gluten-free options, but I think they're kinda in a really, a niche over there with the. Yeah. With their products, so.
Well, getting back to the parking lot, you'll have to have a handicap spot placed out there.
Yep.
And what are you planning on doing for a wall or a divider between those seats and the parking in the backyard? That looks like it may be sort of a potential hazard there to have the cars right by there.
In the patio areas?
Yeah.
I'd like to do some sort of, um, like a wrought iron fencing with some nice greenery, maybe some.
Do you have that defined at all? And we need some definition as to what you're gonna plant back there and what you're gonna use for a fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have not nailed what exact fence.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you still have a little work to do as far as planning.
Yep.
Whatever we need to do. That's why we're here.
Yep. Um, and there's some stuff in the application about deliveries. Can you talk a little bit about what you're planning to do for that? Where they'll be made, and what times, what you expect?
So we, on the High Street there, the delivery truck would probably pull in there, um, unload through the patio, straight through into the, uh, back kitchen there, uh, the second entrance on the right there, and that's where all the deliveries would be made.
Okay, parking on the street, on High Street to unload?
Uh, most likely.
Yeah.
Or in the parking lot, if it's, if it can happen.
Yeah.
If everyone's okay with it.
So it would happen, what, early in the morning?
Yeah.
Overnight or something, or?
Yeah, probably six-thirty, seven o'clock, can be as early as probably five-thirty, six.
As early as possible, so your employ, your customers can.
Is there any issue with that with residences around there, or?
I mean, they're allowed to do it, I mean, we can certainly take into account.
That's a business area.
I mean, it is.
It is, okay, I just wanted to know if there was any restrictions.
And do you expect deliveries to happen every day, or once a week, or what kind of deliveries do you think you'll get?
Probably twice a week. Yep.
Okay, and what are you expecting? What do you typically get for deliveries?
Uh, veggies, I mean, flour, all the stuff that, all the ingredients we need just to operate, uh, dry, dry goods, like paper goods and whatnot, um, yep.
And talked a little bit about the dumpsters, and you're planning on fencing those in, um, what about sort of any unique kinda waste or anything that you generate at the restaurant other than just sort of basically garbage, trash, household type things?
No, no, I can't think of really anything that's.
Nothing like, uh, oil to dispose of, or things like that that are?
From the fryer.
Yeah, we'll have oil, um, yeah, we'll have biodiesel, um, containers that could be placed inside the dumpster fencing that a company comes each week or whenever they're, whenever needed, and just pumps it into a truck.
So they'll take the used oil.
Yeah, they use it, yeah, they, the, the two cans just stay right on site, and we dump them into there, and then they come and take it, uh, and just pump it into their truck and take it away.
Okay.
Which is pretty good. Yep.
Okay. Um, and what about snow removal on this back lot? Have you given any thought to that about sort of where you would store it and how you'd do that?
Um, just from a fourth, fourth, I would think, uh, we would probably have to drag it back and out, or, um, leave some designated space on the side there with maybe a different style paint, so that we can keep four or five feet as a buffer zone there on the, on the right side to push it to.
Yeah, cause that's a tight spot now.
Yeah. Or if possible, drag it out and push it to the back of the, what?
Hollow away.
Yeah.
Um.
If need, hollow it away.
That's true. You may have.
Anybody else have any other questions? I mean, the back patio has some question marks on it still.
Yeah, definitely.
With regard to the timing, you said you'd open at six-thirty, uh, close at five. Restaurant bakery, I wanna make sure I nail that down. I'm getting the sense it's really more breakfasts and lunch.
Yeah.
But you're not doing dinner, which is why you're closing at five.
Oh, I, yeah, I would say if, we're in the hopes of growing into a dinner, um, maybe Thursday through Sunday.
So it is possible that you'll have later hours going forward, and how late would you anticipate if you're gonna do dinners? Is it, was that nine o'clock, ten o'clock?
I would say ten o'clock.
So really, we're six-thirty to ten?
Would be sort of your longest day if everything goes great and you're expanding.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's a year into.
Right.
We're just planning for the future, but.
Yeah, just so we can be thinking of that.
Yep.
And what else might happen.
Is that why you're also applying for a liquor license?
Yes.
I can imagine you wanna just sit down with bourbon and cupcakes or something, or?
Speak for yourself, Chris.
Coffee cake. I know, I mean, it sounds fantastic.
I know what you're saying.
Sign me up.
Long as you're fine.
Yeah, right, exactly. That's what I'm, next board meeting will be.
Okay, you guys mind if I open this up to the public? Anybody here have any comments, questions? No?
Looking on to.
Can you come, if you're gonna, can you just come up, so we can just record for everyone at home too?
Name and address.
My name's Patrick Korsak, and I live on thirteen Clark, but looking on to the Google Maps, if you look at the back lot behind the building, next to it behind the comics and more, you can see parking spaces coming off the back of building.
Mm-hmm.
So I think they would probably have several spots available on that end of the lot.
Hmm.
And I do have a background in space planning.
But it sounds like there's spots there, but that they don't have a, any sort of arrangement with the property owner to use those spots.
Mike Superson.
Well, let's see, actually, it's the lot that is adjoining to the back of the building where they're gonna do the patio.
Oh, it's their lot you're referring to.
Yeah, there would be room there if they needed to do parking.
Well, yeah, and that's what they're proposing in the grassed area to propose parking, but behind there, I don't know if that lot, apparently that's not owned by the applicant.
Correct.
Lot behind, so that would be public. Is it open parking? Is that what we're assuming that it is, or is that, do we know if it's open parking?
I don't think we can include it.
It was always, my understanding that it was open parking, as is the lot across the street between, um, Rite Aid and Smaller than.
Are you guys planning on fencing in the parking area and that whole back lot area, or just leaving that open?
Leaving the back parking lot area open, but fencing in like the dining.
Patio?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll definitely be, definitely be separated.
So the idea then would be that it's sort of, I mean, it's all surrounded by parking lot there, you would pave it all, so it's all basically paved.
Yep.
Paint a few spots on there against that, the side of comics and more.
Yep.
And put the patio area in behind some sort of fencing?
Yep.
And considering snow removal, because piggyback off whoever's contracted for the rest of the parking lots.
Well, it becomes a little, it becomes a little easier if it's all sort of one big paved surface, but I'm also, I mean, it looks like the place where you've got the dumpsters drawn on there is sort of in the middle of the parking lot then.
It's very confusing.
Which makes it a little.
Yeah, makes it.
What is the, why is the placement of the dumpsters? What's, what was the reasoning behind that?
Uh, keeping it away from the outdoor seating.
Right.
The furthest possible.
So you don't have to smell on it.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, there, I.
I mean, that part, just looking at the aerial photographs, looks like it's gonna be kinda dicey for people coming into the parking lot to create.
It is, it's gonna be an obstacle for everyone involved, I think, it seems to me, the way it's designed.
There you go.
I'm just afraid that something's gonna happen there.
So like that.
So this lot is, is owned by, it's owned by whoever owns here. Claire.
Is that Big E?
Claire and Ed Corvus.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
And those other three spots are part of the comics and more parcel.
Yeah.
So it appears that, just from looking at this, it appears that the dumpsters are proposed, I don't know, like, out?
Right.
In this, in this area, which is gonna be a ch, a challenge for people, they're coming in. Is, is the reasoning why, like, so I see there's a parking spot here, there's a parking spot right up against there, how would, how would the truck access the dumpsters to empty them? Do they do it from inside this way, or do they do it from the back parking lot? Yeah, that's gonna be an, an issue there, too.
Do you wanna come up, just introduce yourself, name and address?
My name's Arthur Jones, I live at fifteen Knight Avenue in East Hampton. Uh, I'm the property owner at thirty-three to thirty-five Union Street, and if I could, I'd like to go up to the board.
Please, that'd be great.
Yeah. Go ahead. It's a bit challenging to get there.
Yes.
My understanding is, is the proposal is to put the dumpsters in this area.
We have.
The ceiling up here, and all this greenery and parking in this area.
Okay.
Okay.
You do have, as you can see by these two arrows, movement back and forth to High Street.
Right.
Right.
This property here, up to this point, used to be owned by the former owner here, Mr. Savoy. And it was sold to Mike, or to Ed Corbule and his wife, and it's in their trust. And that's pretty much all I can tell you about.
So, so how would the dumpsters get emptied? How does that work? How does a truck come in and empty them?
How's the truck gonna get in there to empty them?
Well, that's, I have no idea.
I thought you had an idea.
They could come down, on down Union Court, which is a private way.
Yeah.
Or they could come through here, which is a private way.
Yeah, and so they're using that parking lot to, to empty your dumpsters, you're not, not the parking lot you're proposing as part of the, this plan?
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're looking at, but my, my understanding is the dumpsters are gonna be as far back here as possible, away from any seating, feeding areas and so forth. Again, for the, keep the smells and run it away.
I mean, I suppose if they're doing it after hours and that parking lot is empty, they might be able to go in there and do it, but it's not, that's not the location I think that's on-
It's not, no.
At least the plan that we have.
Yeah, have to figure something out there.
Pardon?
Have to figure something out on how to do that dumpster.
Yeah. But these are, are all privately owned.
Yeah.
Right.
Carol, Carol Stalas owns this, or George Stalas, and now it's Carol, and this is the Corbels, and this is the Corbels.
Privately owned, so no one, the public cannot park there if they wanna go in to dinner, is that correct? Is that what that means?
Right, or you'd have to have some sort of arrangement between them and the property owners.
Strikes me that you'll have to likely come back one more time.
Yeah.
Um, we've got a lot of different designs, hopefully consolidate them together, and definitely the things that we're raising, where are the dumpsters, where's the snow gonna go?
Yeah, so let's think about this and let's help them, I've given them a list of what sort of jumped out, cause I think that-
Can I just point something out?
Please.
It was something that Chris was asking about earlier, was the zone. So this, this, it's, it's right on the edge between a residential zoning district and downtown businesses. This is their property here, downtown business. This is actually zoned residential.
Interesting.
So, that was just a question that you had about-
Right, so if it's residential, I imagine are there different, um, there's different requirements for noise, I would imagine, so it's like, I know in residential it's seven AM, right?
There's no noise.
There's no noise ordinance.
No noise ordinance.
Really?
So it's just something that the board would need to consider in terms of conditions that you might wanna put on the permit in terms of delivery times or whatever,
Right.
if that's a concern.
They are, this particular project is zoned downtown business.
Yes.
Right.
The parcel is zoned downtown business, but it's, it abuts residential zone, this parking lot being, it's a butting.
Right. Okay, so, I agree with what Jim said, I think that, at least for me, that back area of the patio and stuff is the primary question mark, and I think that, um, if you can come back with a plan of sort of, this is what we wanna do, and I, I think if your thought is, we don't know if we're gonna do the full or the half patio, that I would come with the whole thing, just like we're talking about dinner hours, that it's easy for us to, if we were to approve twelve backyard seats, that, you know, if you only put six in, that's not a problem, it'd be the alternative that would be difficult.
Add on the others without coming back.
I think a plan for like the flow of both customers coming in from that parking lot, sort of the idea of that walkway, like where you wanna put that, and a firmer idea of what you want for parking spaces and dumpsters, and where you would locate those, and talk to somebody about both, if you can talk to someone about how they would get the dumpsters serviced and what you'd do with snow removal, and a barrier that's gonna be both attractive and safe for people that are eating their dinners while somebody's backing their car into a spot.
Right, I imagine, I mean, I'm not sure, but I, I would imagine that if you contacted a trash removal company and said, these are the dumpsters you wanna use, what's your radius that you need to bring a truck in and back it in and empty the dumpster? That'll give you what you need to be able to empty them, so you can not hit any of these spaces.
They get smaller dumpsters and they have to come more often, but at least they'll be able to get their trucks in.
Paving, paving that back lot too will change the drainage.
Right, so, I mean, that's another thing, you mentioned the kinda concrete, the stamped concrete you were gonna use or the paving areas, I think if you can get a clear idea of what you're planning on using, so we can think about how that, I mean, it's obviously a parcel of grass that's surrounded by, you know, acres of pavement, but it's also like the last little bit of grass, like the ways that it may impact the drainage and the water flow. If you can get us stuff on that, that might be helpful too, just if you can do some. Anything else at this point that we can give them that, to come back with, cause I think those are the things that jumped out at me.
Yeah, I mean-
Those are-
I didn't see anything about the actual inside that, I mean, we may have to talk about hours and deliveries and things like that related to other stuff, but it looked like the layout from that last plan.
Much better, I like the inside layout a lot better this way because it's-
Yeah, it does.
Se- separated out, public's not entering the cooking space.
Right, that was one of my concerns from the plan we had.
Let's just remember that the planning board actually doesn't have jurisdiction inside.
Over anything, it's board of health.
No, but-
Well, no, 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 no. You have, you have jurisdiction over the use itself and the impacts of that use inside, you can't be commenting on walls and stuff like that. I think the only thing you could look at is how pedestrian flow is coming in and out of the space, and if there's any concerns with that and how it impacts the outside, but in terms of like where the tables are set or the ki- I mean, they have to go make sure they get a kitchen design,
Right.
which they know, and they should be talking to the board of health, have you done that? Okay, so she's looking at whatever you have, okay. Cause I just don't want that to change, and then that-
Right.
Changes something inside and then-
No.
But really, what you're looking at is how people are coming in and out of the space and how that-
It was just an opinion.
No, I know, I just, like to casually remind you-
No, and I appreciate that, cause I always- So, um, right, for something this small, it does a stormwater plan?
Well, I just did the, I just measured, so it's point eleven acre, so it's forty-seven, forty-seven ninety-one point six square feet, so it's ten thousand is the trigger-
Yeah.
For stormwater, so it's okay in terms of the stormwater ordinance.
Okay.
It's not big enough. But, I, but, that being said, I think it's an interesting point that, I mean, this is now gonna go from grass to completely impervious surface, and to make sure whatever that flow is on that forty-seven hundred square feet is not gonna be impacting neighbors in some way, shape or form.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
And the only other thing I'm thinking is, you know, not only, getting back to the barrier or the fencing on that back patio area, if you're gonna have people back there, especially if you start going into dinner and you have a liquor license, you know, both to keep cars out, but also customers in a specific area, you know, wandering around with a drink in hand in a parking lot and starting to mix.
I, I know, I would wanna see a fence plan, I would wanna see the design of the fence, where it's gonna be, I would wanna see if you're gonna put greener in, give us the, the, the type, the species, you know, how big it's gonna grow, and, and what size it's gonna be when you, when you plant them. I would wanna see-
You're gonna need that for the licensing board anyway, so you might as well figure it out now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come up with a final decision on the spots you're gonna have, you know?
Yeah.
And, and where those dumpsters are gonna be, so, just more concrete ideas, you know, give us a real proposal on everything that, that we're coming in with, so that we can really evaluate it.
So, how long you think you guys want for this? You want a month, or? To come back, to get the plans together and come back?
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting is on election night.
Yeah, so we're probably gonna skip that one.
There may not be a meeting, we can't have public hearings anyway.
Right.
I mean, this isn't technically a public hearing, cause it's a site plan approval, but we really shouldn't be having-
I think probably we should skip that meeting.
State law doesn't allow that, so, uh, is the twenty-first, I think, yes, twenty-first of November?
Yeah, that looks good.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
All gonna be here, right?
Yeah.
I'll be here.
Jessica's just gonna cook up some turkey and-
I'll cook up a tasty meal.
Is that enough time? Do you want more time?
Tic Tac, can you get Tic Tac?
Alright, so, can I get a motion to continue till November twenty-first?
Make a motion that we continue this till the twenty-second of November.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, okay. Alright, excellent. Thanks very much, we'll see you in a month.
Awesome.
So, did you get that list, Jessica?
I sort of kind of had something.
Okay.
Plan for the flow of customers, um, walking between the parking and the dumpster, dumpster location, how the parking lot's gonna get serviced and snow removal, barrier of fencing, attractive and safe, planting plan.
Yep.
Alright.
I like the way your fingers were counting, I really couldn't tell if there were numbers or-
May I have all of the, um,
Yes.
pieces of paper back and I will scan this copy?
There is a third one.
I didn't, you didn't give us that.
We'll be getting a new copy high queen.
I pass them down to you guys, and it might be a single sheet.
They should've had their own copies, cause I-
I already had my own copy.
Okay.
This is, this is it?
Gave out three, you get two back, that's how it works.
There's one.
Not okay.
Hold this one at the end here. That's not part of it, did you write on that one?
I wrote on it.
Alright, we'll figure it out at the end.
Alright, everyone look at your stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I wrote on that, so, you can give me that copy back later.
Never in writing, Jessica.
No.
Alright, moving right along, old business, continued discussion on proposed zoning for recreational marijuana. So, we, uh, had some changes made in the draft ordinance, and we had a few issues to consider, and we also have this, um, bylog, this is, well, it's really like a, it was a town meeting-
Yeah.
Vote for Halifax, Massachusetts, which I've thought caused more problems than it solved, but that was just my own personal opinion, but-
I don't even, honestly, I don't even remember who gave it to me at this point, I don't know where it came from.
I think it was the one that the AG's office said that, uh, no, they don't, they were dealing with the moratoriums.
I've been to so many meetings on this, I can keep track on-
We should probably focus on what we need to do, or what items we can tackle to try and push forward our own-
Right.
Own zoning.
Okay, and so we had identified a few issues to discuss this time, some of which were in the notes on the draft ordinance. So, um, we're gonna deal with the issue of parking limits and calculations, line queuing, a patron management plan, there's a note on here about whether they need a provisional license before they can apply for a local permit. I don't know how, we don't know how the regs will work, but that, that's what it was for medical, is that right, Jessica? Or it could go that way?
It could be, I mean, a lot of the, well, the medicals, they've done parallel tracks. Cause they need, they can get the provisional license at the state level, but then I think they need the local permit in order to take you to the next step after that, so they may have like started the process, gotten their provisional okay, and then, once they've done that, then they go local, get those local permits.
And then, we talked about sort of whether we need to address issues with the manufacturing process, and then the other stuff that didn't make it on the notes here, but were in our notes from last time, is the idea of nuisance, if we need some language about creating a nuisance, if we wanted to address the issue of outdoor growing, and if we needed to deal with more with the cooperative concept, and how we wanted to handle that.
Boy, there's a lot there.
There's a lot there, I don't think we can cover all those things at all, I mean, I think one that's sort of, um, a little more discreet and easy for us to deal with regardless of how the world changes around us is the concept of outdoor growing.
Sure.
Yeah. And I think that, um-
Current law requires that it have a fence of, I think, six feet, it can't be visible from the road.
That's for the medical, is that the same?
No, the, the recreational has, it's got a language about, it can't be visible from off the property with the naked eye or binoculars or-
But that's, I think, the same in the medical too, that's the same language.
Right, there's a removal area.
Here we go, so, and this is just related to penalties, so it doesn't-
What section are you in?
Thirteen. I'm on page twenty-nine of this copy.
I don't have that.
I don't have that either.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, this one I'm working on.
So this says, "No person shall cultivate or process marijuana plants pursuant to section eight of this chapter if the plants are visible from a public place without the use of binoculars, aircraft, or other optical aids, or cultivate or process marijuana plants outside of an area that is equipped with a lock or other security device." So, that applies even to home growing, and it's not, I, I was wrong, it's not, um, visible from anywhere off the property, it's gotta be a public place, so it would be like from a street or a sidewalk, which is a little different, but it does need to be secure, I mean, I don't, I don't think those are particularly onerous, especially if you're growing for commercial use, that it would be more relaxed than what it would be for home growing, but I don't know.
Yeah, an example would be, someone has a garden in their home and say an R fifteen, uh, which is a relatively smaller, uh, lot size, and what you would need essentially do is to conceal it so that the people walking their dogs on the street-
Right.
Right.
Wouldn't be able to-
Wouldn't see it, but your neighbors couldn't.
It sort of encourages backyard growing over front yard growing, it encourages screening and security and that kinda thing, like minimal, I don't know that it's invisible from a public space.
You're gonna grow it outside, you just have to find some way of amplifaging it.
And I think it's really important that it's public, because then if you have a neighbor who's got a second story, who's looking out his window, that doesn't count, that's a private view.
Right, it's-
Right, and so, I know that, I think that the market forces on this probably are driving most of the commercial growing indoors, but assuming somebody, I mean, looking at sort of every permutation and things that might develop, do we feel differently if someone is growing, you know, on ten thousand square feet behind a commercial?
In this climate, no serious grower is growing outside.
But do we care if they do? I mean, i- is that gonna be a, is that gonna pose a problem that we should think about? Or would the same rules apply? I mean, if someone has an eight-foot fence and a lock on it with barbed wire at the top, and they're growing in, in an empty lot, in a zone that we've zoned for growing, does that pose any issues that we're concerned with, someone might think about? I mean, odor's the one thing, right, that doesn't help.
Odor's the one thing I can think of, cause you can't see it already.
Right.
So, is if they fill the entire thing with cannabis plants in the middle of an R fifteen, someone fills their whole lot with some fencing?
Well, you'd be able to smell it a mile away.
Well, R fifteen wouldn't be zoned, right, so you couldn't grow there anyway for commercial.
No.
Right, so-
Yeah, you're right.
So it would be-
You're right.
It would be, basically be, we're talking like industrial. If, if someone had an industrial lot and decided to-
I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
The parcel, um, right off the bike trail next to Fort Hill Brewery.
Right.
That field is industri- industrial.
Zone industrial, right, so, let's just, and let's ignore market forces, cause I think you're right, from everything I've read, that you would be insane to do it, but, but someone may be insane and do it, cause people have been insane before, so, if someone put up an eight-foot stockade fence with a locked gate and filled that whole field with marijuana plants, does it pose any issues that we want the zoning to catch? That we should? Yes? Yes, please, come on up.
So, last, my name's Karim Marisk, I live at thirty-eight Everett Street, thank you.
You're getting good at that, thank you.
Um, specifically the DEA and the state troopers, uh, last year, they came in this area, they flew helicopters over. So, um, in the specific instance I think that most people know about was the old lady in Amherst who had one plant. It was in a enclosed fence area, but because it was visible from above, the problem comes from if the federal government in partnership with the state does and has flown helicopters.
Right, but so, that was before recreational was legalized, right, so, so the state is a non-factor in that sense, and the DEA, I mean, all they have to do is subpoena and find out that, I mean, there's, everyone's gonna be advertising, so like, I don't know that that makes them more likely or less likely. I think there are reasons why a reasonable grower wouldn't want to do that, but I'm just trying to think if we're dealing with an unreasonable grower, are there, like, I think the odor is an issue, but I don't know how, saying you can't grow outside for commercial purposes.
Doesn't know what you could, I don't think so.
Right.
You can't control the wind.
Right.
Right.
I think it's, there was some point about coverage or like being in a greenhouse, and, and then, just to know that that's going on in the state on a regular practice, and this person was a medical patient, he was, I mean, there were-
Yeah, it was a little messy, yeah, yeah.
You know, she wasn't, you know, didn't have a hardship growing license or provisions, but, just something to keep in mind, because the fact is, they're still happening, and our rec law is in conflict with the federal law, so they still may be continuing raids even after the recreational.
Right, but I mean, if Jeff Sessions decides he wants to raid our recreational marijuana facilities, it's not gonna be cause he can see it from an aircraft, he's gonna know where all of these licenses were granted.
I think you hit the nail on the head, there's nothing more we can add to it, I think that, I, I, you know, smell's the only issue, and I can't think of a single thing we can do about it.
Right. I mean, if it's like the, if it's like the medical regs, the medical regs, I don't think allow outdoor growing, cause you can't have any odor or anything like that, that's perceptible, so, it very well may be that the state license regs eliminate commercial outdoor growing anyway.
Marty Klein brought to my attention at one of our meetings here that hemp in agricultural zones is currently allowable. If someone wanted to just start growing hemp in an agricultural zone up on East Street somewhere, maybe if we, you know, have one up there, they could just fill those fields with hemp and the smell would be quite overpowering, so we have it already, you know?
Is it the same smell?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is that the case with hemp? I don't, I don't know if that's-
I don't know if hemp smells in marijuana.
I don't know if hemp has an odor or not, I have no idea.
I, I can't say that I, that I know.
Okay, well, I mean, at, at this point, are we comfortable putting in the language from the statute sort of restricting it to, you know, they can't be visible, they have to have the fence and be locked and that kinda thing?
Now, would we add that in, or just not say anything, cause it's already defaulting to the other?
I would put it in, cause I think this is in the section about sort of like remaining criminal penalties, so this is like, if you do this, you're subject to a three hundred dollar fine and-
And it makes it easier for people to know.
Yeah.
I agree, maybe we should put it in.
I mean, do, how do you gentlemen feel about that as a restriction? I don't think this is a-
We can't do it outside.
I guess that's, I mean, from my point of view, the only other logical answer would be that you can't do outdoor commercial growing.
Commercial, right.
I mean, remember that you still have the right under here to do your plants based on your home personal use, so, that would be the only way I could see if, if there was a concern about odor or security or any of these other things, that you really have to go all indoors then.
I would, I would have a, so I'm thinking about that property as an example. I would, I would wonder if we're opening ourselves up to people coming to meetings saying, you know, I'm with my child going down the bike path, and I'm on a nice bike ride, and my child's asking what that smell is, cause it smells good or something. You know, and then I, I don't know.
I mean, something that big, and, and the proximity to the bike path is kind of an interesting, um, dynamic too, but it's-
And that Fort Hill spot's right there.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Here's another interesting one, you've got, um, are they called CSAs, these farm shares?
Yeah.
Would it be commercial if they decided to put a small plot of cannabis in next to the spinach and next to the tomatoes and?
It's a public space though, I mean, it is a public area, right?
I mean, they'd have to fence it in, but, you know, what if they're for commercial purposes, they decided to throw, you know?
Ten foot high, by ten foot wide.
Yeah.
It's like one, a niche concept, I, I think what you've come upon there is just basically keeping the existing rules and adding nothing more to it. I think that, that's a viable.
Although, I mean, these are, these are sort of home, these are requirements for the home grow stuff. But, I mean, I guess, like I said, I think, are you looking at the medical regs there, Jessica, or are you going through something else?
I, I have in my head that there's another provision in here about agricultural outdoor-
That's certainly possible.
Outdoor grow, and so I was just seeing if I-
I went through three times to find this one that I was looking for, literally every page, it took me three times through.
Yeah, I, I have it in my head, there's another provision somewhere, I'm just, keep going, I'm just not taking notes.
What if we, you know? Get that far with it?
Yeah.
And then see if we can find any more provisions that would-
Yeah, or, or see, I mean, like I said, I mean, my recollection for the medicals, because it can't have any odor and it has to be indoors, they don't allow it anyway for medical, so it very well may be the same way when they ultimately put out state regs, but-
I would think that the other consideration on the medical side is that they have to maintain growing conditions in order to guarantee the potency of their product.
Well, I think that's gonna be true on the commercial and for recreational, but also, the medical stuff all came into a, an environment where it was illegal recreational, right? So, we've always had the security concerns of sort of theft and especially the cash-based business, but I think the hope at least is that the theft of product will lose some of its attraction when it's something you can buy legally, but, I mean, a field that big full of marijuana plants, I mean, an eight-foot stockade fence is not gonna be a smart decision either, but-
Here it is, uh-huh.
Alright.
Well done.
So this is under section, section twelve, general marijuana established operation. And you'll see that A says that any marijuana establishment, so that's like the umbrella term for everything,
Yeah.
has to secure every entrance so that access, containings restricted to employees and others permitted, blah, 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 secure its inventory and equipment during and after operating hours to prevent theft, blah, 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 and then, so that I think those two provisions would make it difficult anyway to do outdoor grow, but then, it says in here, hold on, "A greenhouse or outdoor marijuana cultivation area shall have sufficient security measures to demonstrate that outdoor areas are not readily accessible by unauthorized individuals, including perimeter security fencing designed to prevent unauthorized entry."
Yeah, well, in the part before, uh, you can't do it at any location other than at a physical address approved by the commission and within an area that is enclosed and secured in a manner that prevents access by persons not permitted by the marijuana establishment to access the area.
So there's nothing about smell? So there's nothing about smell?
It's all fence, that's all.
Right.
It's all about security, but I think with a greenhouse. I would think you'd be able to maybe control odor, because you can put, you know, fan systems or something, but. I mean, it still needs to, I don't know, cause there's a heat, I don't know why anybody would do it, I think it's too, I mean, honestly, if it was my product I was trying to grow. And you can't necessarily control those heat and fluctuations of temperature and sun, it just seems like it would be.
Yeah, commercial outdoors are always unlikely, you're far more likely to see hobbyists and, you know.
And then it does go on and it includes again the part about, um, no marijuana establishment shall take any action. Um, to be visible from a public place without the use of binoculars, aircraft, or other optical aids, so it repeats that requirement. So, I mean, I think that those, that language is probably sufficient if we use something like that, but I think it does make sense to put it in our bylaw too, so someone going through it. Knows what to do and not do.
But I'd like to see it summarized next meeting, so we can double check it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you wanna pull the language out of here for outdoor grow? Do you want to be specific about where outdoor grow would be allowed, which zones? Is it just industrial?
Well, we're talking commercial.
Yeah, I mean, I think that falls under any of the commercial cultivation, right?
Okay. Did we decide? I don't think we ever decided, why is it still highlighted? Did we decide and I just didn't change the highlight?
For what?
Independent testing laboratory marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer permitted by special permit or site plan approval in the mixed-use mill industrial and industrial zoning districts.
Yeah.
We did not make a decision, we, that was one of our homeworks, was to come back and say what, what the permitting process would be.
Oh, right, because we wanted to make sure that it was, it was streamlined.
Yeah, and they didn't have conflict.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One question with it too. But as far as the commercial outdoor grow, it seems agricultural and industrial.
We don't have agricultural.
Have an agricultural zone.
So, we would.
You could specifically say that you want outdoor grow only in a specific zone, I don't see why you wouldn't be able to do that if you felt strongly about it.
But so, is there a reason we would let?
Commercial outdoor grow.
Outdoor grow in agricultural, but we wouldn't allow indoor? Grow in agricultural?
No.
Well, let's put it this way, outdoor grow. So, alright, so the, I mean, really, you're only saying it's allowed in mixed-use mill industrial and industrial anyway.
Right.
There's not a hell of a lot of parcels available in those two zones that are even, don't, don't even have a building on them.
Right.
So, is it even worth?
We're zoning it out of existence.
I mean, I don't, you're not necessarily zoning it out of existence, but I can think of like. One, two parcels or maybe.
Well, I think that this is the kind of scenario that's, it's.
You're teetering on the edge of.
Unlikely to happen, especially in the format that we're concerned with, but trying to make sure that it doesn't create.
I say you keep those zones and take the language.
Okay, so if you find a place where you can fit something outdoor in those zones, you have to meet these requirements.
Just about the security and the fencing?
Yeah.
Right.
What about odor?
How can you control odor?
If you have a special permit in front of you, one of the things you need to consider under the special permit.
Right.
Is odor, you do it for industri- any industrial noise, odor, sound, I mean, those are things that you look at for any industrial use. So, you're gonna just ignore the odor part?
Well, no, I mean, and I think that's also part, like, if we have language about a nuisance, that that's exactly the kind of thing that creates a nuisance is if you've got an odor that's. So, I mean.
It's kind of why only agricultural's the kind of zone where that would apply, since we have no agricultural.
So is it even viable?
So we can just say, I mean, we can say no commercial outdoor growing in East Hampton, I mean, I think that is the alternative.
I, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I don't either, I mean, I think that people can grow for personal consumption outdoors, and they can grow commercially indoors.
And then you can control your products, you can control the smell.
The only, the only thing, the only issue I have with it is that one instance I brought up of the, of like the CSA. Who might wanna have a little section and everyone at the CSA loves it and they're all good with it.
But it would have to be an greenhouse.
Now we've stopped it.
Right.
Because they can't put it in the middle of their field, which is thousands of feet from, you know, anything else.
But that's not, that's, that's not, um, mill or industrial zone anyway.
That's agricultural.
Right, but also.
So residential zone.
Yeah, they're in residential.
Residential.
But also, somebody, if there was somewhere where they did wanna do it outdoors, so to speak, like that, they could do it by. Creating a greenhouse or building a structure.
Just doing it on their own, if you're gonna have a ten by ten plot, just do it on your own land.
My, my hesitancy is that I just wanna make sure before I say yes.
Right.
Stop doing it, that I've thought of all the possible outcomes and someone doesn't come at us and be like, why can't I do this?
Why we're not gonna be done with this discussion anyways, right? So I think that we can, we can pencil it, I think that does make more sense. I think because it's such a sliver of a chance that anyone's gonna do it in a productive way, and frankly. Jessica, you're right, I mean, that's just a nuisance, it's the same reason why if someone wanted to open a hog farm next to someone's house.
Exactly, yeah.
Why zoning was created was because of the hog farm and the slaughtering, that's, that's the basis of zoning.
Okay. That's a true story.
Okay, I did the CBT sequel, so.
One of the few things I learned from law school.
My class that I signed up for, I hope.
Um, okay, so, so we'll just put in a specific provision that says?
No.
No commercial outdoor.
No commercial outdoor grow.
Okay.
I think it just, it just protects us and it just, it makes sense. It's just all so hard to take down a road.
Okay, there was, Jessica, in one of our many drafts, a, um, the language about a nuisance. Do you remember that?
Language about a nuisance?
About nuisance, about like, um.
Nothing's really, I have all of the.
Not in one of our drafts, in one of the things we have from somewhere else that you've raised.
I don't know what this is.
We talked about it briefly at the last meeting about language, about, um, you know, whether. How it would impact neighbors and that kind of thing as far as the process for evaluating an applicant. I'll go back and look through, I'll find it the next time.
I mean, special, I mean, it's the special permit process with your criteria, unless there's additional criteria that you add to that, I mean, that's gonna be your base no matter what.
Right.
If it's a special permit, you still have to go through that special permit criteria for approval, that doesn't change. And then if you wanna add stuff above and beyond that, which the zoning does all the time, you know.
Was there something in particular that?
No, I don't remember, I'll go back and look through.
Facilities, I mean, they all have additional standards above and beyond, so if you wanna add additional standards.
I'll go back and look, see if I can find what I was thinking about. Jessica, this new note about state provisional license before applying for a local permit?
I think that's one of the things that we, that came out of that workshop that we went to in Worcester, that was one of the things that Jeff Bag had brought up.
Yeah.
Was that, you know, that, um. You know, doesn't make sense to bec- and I think partially because of the timing. That let everybody go to the state on April first and get their provisional licenses and then, once they have something provisional in place. They submit that as part of their package to the, to the planning board, to the local permit, and it might bite us a little bit more time, that's, I mean.
But do they?
But I think that might be part of the medical too, I think that has to happen.
But we don't know. That's gonna be part of the regulatory scheme yet, right?
We don't, hold on, I feel like we've got some language like that, you know.
Cause I thought we'd get notice from the state under the current law and then we have a window when we can, we have to say there are problems.
If we don't, it just happens, like, given that everything else is in alignment. And I thought it was applications going in, I'd of March.
So one of the application requirements under medical is that documentation that demonstrates that the RMD or the OMMD facility. And its owner operators qualify and are eligible to receive a certificate of registration and meet all of the requirements of the RMD in accordance with. One oh five CMR seven two five of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So, we require them to show documentation that they're eligible to even go through the state process as part of their application process.
Well, and I think even when we approved the one here, it, cause it was in the middle of that process, it was all conditioned on approval by the state.
That's right, but they still showed some documentation, part of their application, that they've actually filed and this is where they're at in the process and.
I mean, I'm still unclear, I mean, I guess it's hard to tell from the statute and the regs, but so, say ABC Corp. Files their application with the state and we get a notice. Tell them either, we already had a hearing and granted them a permit, or this is the first we've heard about it and so you can't approve them until we've given them a permit. Or, I mean, it's very unclear, there's a very tight window to it, I think it's thirty or forty-five days.
Really quick, from what I understand, we have that time to get back to them and it's on us to fit within that window, that they're the authority.
So imagine the scenario where they've, the applicant has never even come to us, right? So like, how would we even schedule a hearing for someone who isn't an applicant?
And honestly, it conflicts with the zoning laws because under the state law, you have sixty-five days to schedule a public hearing, to schedule the public hearing.
Right.
For, for a special permit, that's the state law, so, you know, for cities that have more stuff on their agenda. They may need those sixty-five days in order to get it on the agenda, because there's all this stuff, so now the state's saying. You have to approve this within thirty days, but that doesn't, that doesn't jive with, with state, so there's a, there's a conflict there.
There are plenty of towns that don't meet more than once a month, you could, you could apply the day after a planning board meeting and they wouldn't even have a chance to look at it.
Lack time just to, to submit documents.
So that part is all incredibly unclear and I don't, I mean, again, I don't know how we address that at this point, but it's.
Highly unlikely they won't make modifications to that.
Right, I mean, that's the hope, so, okay, but either way, I guess we can't really. Address that.
No, can't go further with it.
Or do we wanna talk about their parking or customer queuing?
Well, it's gonna come up one way or another.
I'm not sure what we would add on top of the existing special permit or site plan, given the, given the case.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that was talked about at the conference last month was that there's going to be very few of these, at least at the outset. But possibly, I mean, I think there's numerous communities that are either putting moratoriums or bans and so. You may end up with a business that's serving a huge population and so it may, the, the general. Sort of parking requirements we have may not meet a market demand for something like this, and so it may be something to give more thought to. But I don't know, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot of.
Well, and the other thing about the line queues is that, so in the downtown, the sidewalk ownership is right in the middle, it splits. So the city owns half and the, the outside half closer to the street, and then the private owners own the inside half. So, say you've got a retailer that's right downtown business and they have a queue of people that's going in front of all these front doors of other people. So that's, there's gonna be complaints there, there could be possible conflicts with somebody who's in a wheelchair.
Right.
If the queue is, is shifting and there's not enough space for somebody who's handicapped, um, or has accessibility issues to be able to get through, that's a major problem. Um, so that's where I think if you wanna talk about queuing, it's a matter of like, how are those people organized in order to, for, for safe, like. Transport of people walking by that business specifically for handicap.
Are you aware of any precedents, uh, in zoning for queuing limitations?
No, but it may be something that they look at in bigger cities, cause like, think of brunch in New York City, how many queues are there all over there, so.
I think in this context and other states of dealing with.
Must be, because both of the ones I went to in Denver have entire waiting rooms, they're huge.
Right.
For that exact reason, for, for queuing, so it's not out on the street, is it?
Right.
So that would be the zoning then, is that we require a storage facility for people?
Yeah, it's like a square footage per person, and then you can only have a certain number of people in your facility and then. You can only have a certain amount queued even from there into your place where you buy the marijuana.
I mean, I think part of it is the same way we're talking about how customers are gonna come into a back patio of the prior applicant and, and. People milling around and that kind of thing, so, it, I mean, i- in this scenario of a storefront, like, I don't think you can really say like your customers can't wait out front. But when somebody tells you their plan and you look at it and you see you can only hold the one person at a time coming in to buy the product. That you may say, this isn't, we can't approve this, cause you're gonna have a hundred people waiting out on the street.
Right.
So, but I don't know how you regulate it short of that customer queuing is added to the list of considerations for. A special permit or site plan approval or whatever, that like, these are things that we need to inquire.
Maybe the language is something like applicant will provide a, a line queue plan as part of their application. You know, something like, needs to have these thought about it and given some.
Right, so, I mean, I think it's gotta be like, it's gonna be parking, it's gonna be customer waiting, it's gonna be, um, you know. Inside and outside flow of customers.
So we don't wanna necessarily set the provisions, but the thought is maybe make sure that they've got a plan that they're providing with those details and then the board would comment on them. But then that gives it a, that makes it kind of a gray area in terms of like.
Yeah, why couldn't we just require a, a waiting area for each facility? Because they, they actually, the actual establishment where you buy, the room where you buy it doesn't have to be that big.
Right, and so then, so then you're still.
Supposed to be, you can go in and out.
How much space are you gonna require for parking customers, basically?
Right.
Right, parking I can see being more of an issue.
But park, I'm talking about parking bodies, so even at that part, how big of a waiting area are you requiring, I mean, it's not. A traditional business where you say like, we need, you know, parking spaces for each apartment unit or parking spaces for every seat in the restaurant or. So it's like, eh, how do you, how do you define that? I mean, I think it is a little grayer to say like, this is a plan that we need to see, but. I don't know that it's any different than the other things we consider like traffic flow, pedestrian flow, I mean, we don't say like, you need to have. A dumpster in this location, it depends on each plan, like where they're putting it, I don't know.
And the other tricky part is if it is downtown and it isn't a buil- a building that's old and doesn't require parking standards, then. Then there is no off-street parking and it's just a downtown.
Right.
But the people, I, I very much get where we're going with this and I, my instinct, at, at first my instinct was to say. Make, make them have a certain percentage of their square footage in lobby or something like that, but, you know, I mean, we're talking about distribution here, not manufacturing, although they could. Coexist, but I like, I think what you're saying is that we already have these kinds of rules, we're already required to look at. Traffic, at dumpsters, at, at snow removal and these things, but we don't require a specific format, just a reasonable explanation come before us. And I, I think that's a good way to, to put this in, that we need to see your plan and then we'll decide, the same way we make a decision about. Water runoff or, or whatever it is, and we don't have, we have the criteria that we require you present information, but we don't have criteria on what that.
Right.
Is that's the human.
The flip side is what Jessica's saying is that as an applicant, when you look at that, you don't know, I've got a slam dunk case.
Yeah.
Right, so you look at your plan and you think, I've got the sixty parking spaces I need under the zoning ordinance, I know I can go in and get approval for my parking, that's not the issue. With a waiting space or customer queuing, it's harder and I think also it's gonna be really hard that people coming in here are gonna have no idea. What the demand is gonna be, you know, I mean, we ask people all the time, how many people do you usually have there, and I don't think anyone who comes in. I think anyone who comes in here and tells us they know, doesn't know. So, I mean, it's gonna be a totally unique market for something like this, I mean, this isn't available within a thousand miles in any direction from here, so. It's, it's a different kind of world that it's gonna be in, and I don't know how it's gonna shake out either, so. I don't, I'm cognizant of trying to give an applicant an idea like, if we do A, B, and C, we're good, that any of us know what A, B, and C are.
It will change over time, so as the market changes and the production increases. And there's more options for purchasing in other communities, that their moratoriums are lifted, they're passing zoning, they've got applicants coming in. Then, then the queue may not be that bad anymore and it may end up being similar to like a liquor store, people are just sort of running in and running out.
I mean, that's what you see that.
Beginning, it is going to be, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be intense.
Yeah, but with those people that are going in and for the people that are going in and wait, do you? In the beginning, you're gonna have, I don't know if you ever will have a deluge of people wanting to get in. When you have more employees to take care of these people, how would you work that out, that each one to have a cubicle of their own?
Well, think of it like a bank teller, I think that's really the best way to, to think of it, is that it's like a, it's like a bank telling station, right?
It's a one-on-one transaction.
It's a one-on-one transaction, so you're gonna have tellers or whatever they're called, budtenders, whatever they. And then, you know, you will only be allowed to have a certain number of people in that space, because it is a one-on-one transaction. And there is such high security manner, uh, standards that they need to meet, that you will have a queue of people either in the waitroom. Or waiting to get into the waitroom in the beginning, when there's very limited production and very limited places to buy. And if East Hampton's on the forefront in permitting, then we are going to be a place where there's gonna be a ton of, of foot traffic.
Right, and that's the one thing I had sort of got into my head, how would that be taken care of? Yeah, the teller way of doing it, but you.
I think the first two, three.
The first couple of times going into this, maybe the first week, first month. Will give us an idea of how much is going to happen, but as other places open, then everything's gonna start slowing down.
How about this, why don't you guys give me an opportunity, I'll draft some, some language for queuing.
Perfect.
Yeah, that would help.
We can go from there.
Yeah.
There have to be examples in Denver, cause they haven't, they've figured that out already, so it's gotta be examples.
I'll do some Google searches and see what, I mean.
Or for waiting spaces, they may solve it the other way by saying that you have to have an excellent space.
Washington and stuff, they didn't, they didn't have anything about queuing.
One of those towns did, I think, but I'll look through two, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I'll look through two, it's gotta be, cause the two that I went to.
Take a look, but.
Queuing address.
It would be nice if Jessica could give us something like that and then we'll have something as a guideline.
Yeah.
Right, it's better than just talking in a vacuum.
Right, because we could be here for hours talking about the same thing.
Here for hours talking in a vacuum.
Okay, so can you, can you do, can you get us that and if there's any specific language that they're using for parking? So if any of these places look like they are going above and beyond.
Yeah, that should.
Well, yeah, I'll try, I think the parking regs will probably, it may be not in here, it's gonna be buried in their parking section.
Yeah, right.
Take a little bit more digging.
Even if it's unique to the marijuana business, that it might be a subsection of the parking code?
I would think so, I mean, that's how it works for us, right? We've got like residential uses and here's what you need to do for multifamilies, but then you need to go to the parking section to know how many spaces you get.
How about this, how about if I say you don't have to have any of it until November twenty-first, we'll cancel our next meeting just so you don't even have to.
Wow, you would do that for her?
I will do my best.
All right.
Okay, so hold on.
Why don't we, why don't we all look for those issues, we've got a month now, so if we all sort of dig or just think about queuing and parking, if there's a need for a parking sort of surplus or, or not, and if there is, how do we calculate it? And same thing with queuing or waiting areas.
We'll bust one, man.
Good one.
All right.
That's a good one, that's a good one.
I mean, that's good.
Yeah.
Now, signs? Do we need, have we been formally continuing these, Jessica, or are we?
I think you, I don't even know, yes, I mean, you have, you say we're talking about the.
Can we get a motion to continue discussion till the twenty-first?
Seconded.
November twenty-first. All in favor?
All right.
All right, excellent.
Time to draft that, slow down a little.
Who made that move?
Jim. Excellent.
Uh, seconded?
Chris.
That's all I need.
Um, okay, before I move along, do you folks have a question or something? All right.
Can't get enough.
Is it something for us or for Jessica or? Uh, well, hold on, is it just a question for Jessica for the planning department or is it further discussion?
Further discussion.
Do we have further discussion?
We already.
You'd have to reopen it, cause you've already closed it and.
We already closed it.
Can you reopen it?
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
My motion to reopen the discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
We're reopening.
Okay, thank you. The parking lot plans in the back.
Yes.
You were showing the wrong plans.
Okay.
There's actually a final plan.
Okay.
That she has as an email and she has emailed it.
Okay, great, so if you can email that and did that have all these?
Already done.
Okay, so did that have all the issues with the fencing and the?
I believe so, but we could.
The only thing that's not in there is the fences, but it does have the shrubbery, yeah, the material.
And the dumpsters are in the handicap parking and so on and.
And the vegetation, all the plants and stuff, okay.
Snow removal.
If that covers everything that we need, then we can, um, then we'll, should we just address, I mean, I think we're gonna need to look through that.
Yeah.
We'll still have to have the meeting, so.
I think that's the best way to do it and we'll look at it.
My recommendation though is, you're saying that's enough, make sure when you come before us, you don't have to come again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, double check everything.
I'd like to give it to you and if we could get feedback.
Well, I can do something else with emails, so.
Yeah, we can't do feedback, um.
I mean, really the process is, is that.
I would talk to Jess independently.
Yeah, I mean, I can provide you feedback, the board is a regulatory board, they're not here for, as a consultant, do you know what I mean?
Sure.
So, I'd be happy to schedule time with you and to meet with you to review the plan to make sure it's gonna have everything that they're asking for. And that's, but, that's the better process, cause then it's streamlined and it's already. Yeah, 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 no, that's fine, so, why don't you contact me tomorrow, let's pick a day, either this week, next week, whatever, we'll find a day, we'll take a look at the plan and we'll make sure that it's got everything that they need, okay?
Yeah, that actually works really well and then she can say, you're missing this, you're missing that, then you can get that together and have it ready for us, maybe like, what is it, a week or two weeks before the meeting?
Catch something, then you can have time to go back and fix it before I give it to them, so.
Right, that's the better way of doing it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Take care, now we gotta close it again.
Can I get a motion to continue that again for the twenty-first?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you all, uh, moving right along. Yeah, motion to strike that from our lives. Board discussion on proposed amendments to section ten point oh, signs.
Yay.
Signs.
So, Jessica, awesome graphics, this is.
I know, that was really nice, Jess, you did a great job.
Entire sign ordinance for us though.
Oh, I didn't, I have so, there's so much to discuss.
There are some gaping holes.
There are some gaping holes, uh, what do you wanna look at, the use chart or the, what do you, I mean, so I gave you.
What is most pressing in your mind?
I have to know, I, did, did you come up with these?
I, I Googled, I Googled, I Googled. I'd love to take credit and I'd love to say that I had time to create something like that, but.
It's like signs that they offer and stuff, so I was like, Jessica's not writing sign, I'm gonna sign signs.
Maybe I should.
Yeah, now you can.
Um, no, I was just trying to like, in my own, I've been thinking about this for a while, like, maybe I should just create some, like some fake signs so that we would have like a visual, but this is good, cause it's scaled and it's, you know, it was less work for me than actually making some sort of like square footage signs, so, okay. So what I did is I basically started a chart that's kind of similar in a way, it's modeled off of the existing ordinance.
This one?
Yes, that use chart. We have a permitted sign uses chart in the existing ordinance, but it's all content based. So it's like real estate signs and, you know, political signs and gateway signs and. So what I did is I basically took the terms that we had already sort of outlined in the dimensional standards and regulations based on sign type, so these are really based on like how they're, how they're installed, so. Freestanding signs, wall signs, awning signs, roof signs, window signs.
Yeah.
So we don't have any standards right now in that sort of way. Like, we regulate it based on its content, so we don't, we just say a real estate sign, it doesn't matter whether it's on the wall or whether it's, you know.
In the ground or, right.
Whatever, I mean, that's a temporary one, but you know what I mean?
Yep.
So, um, so we're kind of like got a blank slate going on right there. So, I did pull in, um, electronic message centers because that was its own category already. So those standards are exactly the same as what they are in the existing ordinance. Um, there is a.
Can I make a clarification, I just wanna make sure I'm interpreting, N means in those districts, it's not allowed.
Not allowed, yes, so there is a, at the bottom, at the very bottom, P equals permitted, N equals not permitted.
Seconded, babe.
And then the asterisk is per business for commercial uses and per lot for residential uses, so that's when it's talking about the total display area.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so.
So the only wrinkle here that might change even what you've done is like if we wanted to, well, I guess you sort, oh, I see, so the, I'm looking at the bottom one now, so I was thinking like a freestanding sign, you may have a smaller freestanding sign allowance in a residential than you would in a commercial.
Right.
And so that's where you've got the numbers all the way running across, it isn't that the stuff on the left would say for all zones, it would be for each zone.
So it's for each zone and I actually split out residential R five, ten, and fifteen
Yeah.
versus thirty-five, forty, and eighty, cause I think those zones are different characters, you know, they're very different and so maybe you want to regulate smaller signs in one of those zones versus the other one because of just the size of the lots are bigger or smaller or whatever.
You've got a bigger lot, presumably you might need a bigger sign to be seen from the road or to.
Right, and if you go to the other handy-dandy chart on this, that is about, um, letter visibility, which, so if the letter height is three inches, then you should be able to read it no less than thirty feet, but it's best at a hundred. So like, I just think this was kind of interesting because if you start thinking about like property sizes and those letters and how far you're driving, so it's like, you know, sort of putting those.
Yeah, it gets everything to scale. Now, are we gonna grandfather, like, I'm thinking about.
We have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, every sign, uh, every property where it gets grandfathered, we only make rules going forward, so.
Some of the, like, the freestanding signs, that would, in my mind, have a huge amount of variability. I mean, it could be a giant sign, it could be the Magnum or, or the Pro, uh, outside, I'm sorry, I had to reference those, they're hilarious. Um, it, you know, it could just be with a post in the ground or it could be a tiny little thing, like
Or a rooftop?
Tremendous amount of variability, well, rooftops are different.
Separate, yeah, okay.
The freestanding, that category seems so encompassing, I think we should hit that last.
So to sort of go back and forth between this chart, that, what I did do is I started to try to fill in the definitions of like, what is a freestanding sign, because I started to go, well, do, I mean, do I even understand kind of like what these different categories are? So you need to kind of go back to.
Talking about the draft zoning?
Yeah, the draft zoning and you'll see that like freestanding sign is a self-supporting sign, not attached to any building wall or fence, but in a fixed location, this does not include a portable or trailer type sign, so that's how it's defined right now, I'm not saying this is set in stone, but this is, some of these were pulled from ours, I think the definitions are very, not great. So I'm looking at other communities on how they're defining some of these terms and pulling from them.
It's a good start though, I think.
Um.
Well, I also like the suggestion of having graphics for the definition, so you can see this is a sketch of a freestanding sign or an awning sign or a roof sign, I think that will help.
I, yeah, definitely, and there's, you know, definitely sketches we can steal from.
Okay, so.
So the other, so yeah, so there's a couple of things that I kind of ran into. Specifically for EMCs, the electronic message centers, they're currently prohibited everywhere except for mixed u- mixed-use mill industrial. However, there was in twenty fifteen, city council changed the zoning to allow service stations LED signs, which now are content based, cause it's a service station.
Right.
So, um.
In highway business, is that where that occurred?
Yes. So, there's two questions, one, I don't know enough about signs to know whether LEDs and EMCs are one in the same or whether they're actually separate entities.
Well.
Because if you looked at the LED language in the service station one, it talked about.
Yeah, so.
What's the process of allow, is this a situation where it's not allowed, if, if you have not permitted, can you go for a special exemption?
You can get a variance sometimes.
We have, we do have, if you recall, we went back and there's, if it's section.
And it's possible that that LED sign is a special exemption.
You would have to meet certain criteria though, so the way that we've got it listed right now is you can go for an appeal through the ZBA, you can get a special permit, provided that the maximum allowing, allowable deviation, now this is, we have a hold for more discussion here, but this is basically what we set up, twenty-five percent of the requirement of the sign area, the sign height, the sign location, onsite only, and copy height. So, we just held that, but there's gotta be some, they have to make findings, they can't just like, be like, sure, you can do it. So I would say that if an EMC is not permitted in a specific zone, you can't go get a special permit for an EMC. What you could do is say, I want it to be thirty square feet instead of twenty-four square feet and here are the reasons why.
Okay.
And they have to make findings based, you know, we've got findings in here that they have to prove that they can meet.
So, it wouldn't be a special exemption.
Getting back to your first question, I think the, like, the LEDs, it's just, and we probably need to change the definition, cause LED is just like one kind of like a lighted sign, but I, the, the EMCs are programmable, so you can change it to say whereas like, somewhere along here on one of these streets, there's a couple of stores that have like the open signs, but it's like the oval that ju- and it's lit up. So that would be an LED sign, but it's not an EMC, so I think an EMC sign is probably a type of LED sign usually, but not necessarily.
So, where's the?
We don't have LED sign to find, it doesn't look like.
We have, hold on, I gotta find the gas station language, that's in the existing ordinance, because it's, um.
This is why we set the project aside for six months.
We reached the point where it got tough.
Um, well, the way that the, it's just, it's defined in here, this gas station one, is that it's, like, it allows for the changing of numbers and, and when you go to the EMC definition, capable of displaying word symbols, figures, and pictures that can be altered or rearranged, so that's where, like, that's where I kind of got tripped up is because both definitions talk about being altered or rearranged, for the, specific for the gas station LED.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I think.
That's what it was, had to do with the pricing.
Those were EMC lights, I mean, those were EMC signs, even though they called them LEDs, I think.
But they're defined in here as.
LEDs.
LEDs, and so we have now, and that went through a whole ZBA process, like, they proposed it, it was denied, it went to the ZBA. And it, I mean, it like, this was, this.
Just go through approval.
Yeah, this went through a huge process and then they changed the zoning afterwards to allow gas stations to be able to program so that they could change the pricing.
Well, so that's one thing that hopefully we'll clean up with the new bylaw.
It seems obvious to me that gas stations should be allowed to digitally change the price.
Right, but oh, it wasn't a question whether they were allowed to, it was how big those signs could be, that was the problem, is they wanted to put up a larger tower at the F L Roberts.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, they weren't able to do a, as big as they wanted, I think, under the original one.
I don't think they were allowed to do it at all, if I remember correctly, they had to go and change it by hand.
Really? I thought there was a small one they were allowed to, but.
I can't remember, but it was a whole hoopla.
Right, it was.
That I do know.
So.
So, we need definition.
Matrix is we need to fill it in. And there's a lot of blanks.
There is a lot of blanks.
Awning signs, it seems the narrowest possible concept of all the ones I'm looking at there to start with.
But can I get through the chart still, cause there's other things that I wanted to bring up, so before you start getting down into the weeds. So sandwich board signs, I just lifted straight out of the existing ordinance. We have a whole, these ca- all these categories for temporary signs, political, real estate, banners, blah, 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 so that's like, now we have to think about all those different things that have all sorts of different numbers associated with them as like one thing. So I think that's gonna be challenging. Off-premise signs, I put them in here, we currently prohibit them, I think, under our prohibited list. I talked to the building commissioner today, he's still, I, cause this is a new building commissioner from when we did our previous draft, it was a different building commissioner.
Would that include all the political signs I'm seeing currently?
That's, that would be a temporary sign, so an off-premise sign is apple picking this way. Um, corn for sale at the next intersection, um, real estate signs, open house.
Tag sale.
Tag sale, so all those off-premise signs.
Even the ones that we put, we also have to deal with the stuff like on public property, but you know, the one that says craft fair at the high school right now, there's a couple of those up around town, that would be an off-premise sign.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay, I understand that.
Um.
And why does the building inspector not like them?
I, if I'm remembering correctly, I was not planner at the time when they drafted this other ordinance, one of the big points of contention were all of the real estate signs that were throughout the community advertising open houses in the neighborhoods and it, it was just, uh, it was, it was clutter, it was eye clutter, it was distracting, I mean, they were just everywhere. So I think that was, I think that's why there was a.
I thought they put those in when they had the open house and removed them when they're.
No, at the time they didn't, it was not just open houses, it was house for sale.
Okay.
And they would stay up all the time until the house sold and it was, you know, basically along Holyoke Street for all of those neighborhoods, you would drive down and it'd be house for sale, house for sale, house for sale, house for sale, so I think that there was some, there was some concern about that and how it, it was presented in the community, it's distracting and you're driving on main roads, so.
That wasn't the case anymore.
I think they're also, I think it's just easier to enforce too, if you say no off-premise signs.
Right.
Then, there's no off-premise signs.
Yeah, but I mean, telling people that there's the harvest fair or, or.
Well, that's why I mentioned that too, right, cause that's the one that you most want to allow and so like.
On public property, so I think it might, you know, if we allow provisions on public property to say that they can put it up at the Rotary, they can have a temporary sign there or a sandwich board sign, I mean, a lot of times it's just.
What if you wanna put up a sign at Tandem that says harvest fair at the high school? That's an off-premise sign, right, so I mean, that's, I mean, I think the other part is that it lends itself to people putting up signs on property they don't own without permission, so it's one thing to talk to Tandem and get a sign up there. It's another, I mean, you see it all the time, signs that are in people's yards and stuff like that, and I think some people care and some don't, but if you're tasked with enforcing.
Harvest festival and put it on the window as you're walking in.
Right.
Didn't we determine that that's a sign?
We talked about window signs, I remember, and the distance that it had to be from.
You can put it inside, you can put it inside.
On the bulletin board.
Yeah.
We're talking about outside signs largely though, I mean that.
I think that's all you can talk about.
Right, well, visible from the outside, right, cause we defined the signs.
By an inch or.
Yeah, there's a period, so you can't just do those hanging signs inside the window.
So that's another thing. So that's another thing.
What about the East Hampton signs, would they be, I, I mean, we've got our big welcome to East Hampton.
Well, those are gateway signs, and that's listed as, as a, a thing in here, so I don't know how we deal with those.
They lead to other signs.
Unless, unless, unless we determine those are, those gateway signs are, I mean, honestly, do we need to regulate them? They're there, they're not going away, they're getting fixed right now.
No, I like them, I just wanna make sure our regulations don't put them in jeopardy.
Right.
I'm sure they would be grandfathered in anyway.
They'd be grandfathered in.
Right, but if you wanted to put up a new one somewhere else, you might be, I mean-
We only have three points of entry.
Right, but on a different parcel.
Yeah. Banners, and then feather banners, which we also talked about, but you guys like the feather banners and don't have an issue with them, so.
Remind me, are those those curved ones that have the-
Yeah, they're new.
Yes.
They look like windsurfers or something like that?
Yes, and I have, I think they're a bit much personally, so I threw them in there, uh, under the prohibited list, but you guys did not, you guys wanted to allow them.
Well, first of all, we've got a different board now than we did then, but second of all, we, I mean, we still can regulate their size and-
Sure.
Location.
And number.
And number, right.
I think you don't want to have-
That's a good point in here, having the max for each sign and the number of signs you can have, I think that's a good way to-
Yeah.
Think about-
Open.
Is the weird, is the inflatable, wacky guy-
Yeah, the, oh, yeah, the dancer.
No, 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 he's prohibited in here now.
He's prohibited, too.
Why would he be prohibited?
Um, hold on, uh-
Very distracting.
Yeah.
Very distracting.
We're calling him Frank on the, uh-
If you pull this out right now, I'm gonna be so impressed, Jessica.
Wind blowing the right way, he can end up in the screen.
Oh, Jesus.
Thought he was in here.
Ah, they'll find issues with everything. We're gonna take all the political signs down, there's so many of them, elect this, elect that, elect who?
For me, one of the issues is the difference between-
Oh, here it is, I got it.
Okay.
Where is it?
Off-premise advertising signs, including those that include people wearing costumes and or holding temporary signs.
Oh, that's your catch.
So that's the-
The tax guy, Darren Unis.
Yeah, the tax guy.
Tax guy.
Yeah, the tax guy.
Spinning liberty tax.
But you can stand on your premise and do that.
You could do, stand on your premise and do it, but you can't do it off-premise.
On sidewalk, no sign.
You can't go like, you know, to the, to the intersection, or like, you know, how sometimes, like, if you go to Hadley, there's people standing in the median.
Yeah.
Yes.
Saying clearance.
How about all these kids with the, uh, car wash signs, you know, boy scouts, girl scouts?
Yeah, they walk corner to corner.
If they stand on the premise, it'd be okay, right?
Yeah, but they come over and stand like in front of hurry and scurry or whatever.
Can do.
I feel it's important to support them.
We're gonna need to add more jail cells.
Exactly.
Yeah, especially in, yeah, hurry and scurry, you can't do that.
All right, so, this is where we're at.
Okay, so, some of these were, some of these were definitional questions, Jessica.
EMC and LED.
I mean, I just wanted to give you the whole scope of my questions, and then you guys can figure out the one thing you wanna work on tonight.
PTSD, it's having flashbacks, yeah. So, all right, so some of this is definitional, although that seems like it's only the LED and EMC distinction. Is that right, Jessica?
What's that, sorry, I was trying to catch my own minutes, sorry, what?
That's the only definitional part that you have?
Yeah, I just didn't know where to go with it, I guess. You know, is an LED different than a EMC, and if so, we'll just find a different definition?
Yes, please, let's try to find out.
But then, should then, we should be adding LED to the chart?
Okay. Because I think an LED sign is not programmable, it's like a one-message sign. But it's lighted, it like generates light instead of being lit.
So do you want me to add another-
The EM-
Category for LED signs, and then define it?
I personally feel like that's the kind of sign that like, I don't know if I mind it in a downtown business, but I certainly wouldn't want it in a residential. Or something like that, right, so like, I think that allow, it creates another kind of sign to regulate differently in different zones, so I would rather have more options for that. Like, if somebody's doing their, you know, piano lessons, it's one thing to have a little sign on your front door that says piano lessons, it's another to have an LED sign that-
Yeah.
Now, does that in any way, oh, boy.
Keep thinking of wrinkles, this is good.
This, this is going way off the deep end.
Well, you're usually doing that anyway.
Feel like I'm doing my duty. On Christmas, there are some homes that really do the LED lights, and they, and they sometimes spell out words and do all kinds of- People drive by, they're on the radio station and traffic is, and everyone, you know, the kids are like, woo.
And what about these new, uh-
Campering that.
Those new electronic ones where you can put Santa Claus in your window.
We're regulating commercial signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just commercial, not residential signs?
Well, there'll be, there'll be the clause in there, the, there's a clause that-
It's commercials, it could be commercial signs in residential districts, that's the thing.
Right, right.
But it's the, the purpose of them, I mean, it's really not just commercial, though.
There's a clause that they recommend that we all put in here, and it's like the, it's like-
Except for Christmas?
It's basically saying that this is for commercial, not residential, it's like a, I can't remember, I have to go back in my notes.
Substitution clause, non-commercial signs are allowed in all zoning districts, and maybe substituted for any sign expressly allowed under this section. How do you determine what a non-commercial sign is without reading the content of the sign?
Right.
Wait a minute, what?
Very last, last sentence in your-
Where is it?
You like where I've got a problem with it, it's your bylaw here now, Jessica?
Oh, there it is, there it is. It's the very last thing, it didn't underline, that's why I didn't see it.
How does one determine?
If it's a commercial sign or not, because you have to read it, I don't know, this is what all the lawyers are saying we need to have in here, this is like a must-have sentence.
Really?
A must-have sentence.
And maybe substituted, so a non-commercial sign can be substituted for any sign expressly allowed. So, non-commercial signs can go anywhere where they're expressly allowed, which-
All right, that's free speech, so if you wanna say Trump is great, or Trump stinks, then you have the right to be able to do that, that's not a commercial sign, that's-
Right, it's an opinion sign.
An opinion sign.
Right. So what if my opinion is Subway's the best place for lunch in town?
You really had to go there, didn't you?
You're, you're looking, I think he's looking for a black eye.
No, I'm just trying, I, I mean, this, the content thing is always-
I don't know, I'm just following the recommendations of all of the research that I've done.
I love it.
My recommendation.
Says that it, you really just need to have it in there.
You wanna fill in numbers, Jim?
Well, I, I think that if we narrow our focus, it's so bloody big, it's huge, and it's gonna be really easy for me to sink in this.
When it's just bloody big, where did you get that, you went to England or?
Yes. And for me, of, of all these topics, the awning signs seem-
Oh, we're gonna go back to the awning?
Seems the narrowest possible range of what can be done, and it might be a good place to start, now, there might be something else.
What if we literally just do the nos and yeses for something like that, and not deal with the size?
Yes, love it.
Yeah.
I mean, are we comfortable with an outright ban on awning signs in all residential zones? Or if someone has an awning that says Jim's Piano Lessons, do we wanna allow that if it's small enough?
No, I think we're, I'm comfortable with the outright ban in residential, and the first two categories.
I don't mind awning signs, awning signs-
Listen, Jim here is ready to get torches and pitchforks for awning signs, so.
See, I like them, they, they go way back, when I was a kid, they used to have awning signs.
I mean, it's pretty discreet.
We used to get our free ice cream off the awning sign.
Example, where you find, if someone's garage, they have an awning off the garage, and they put Patriots on.
Well, what's wrong with that?
Well, that's not commercial, that's okay, so let's say it says Jim's Auto Repair, because it's someone has a home occupation permit to do small engine repair. And it's, and instead of having a wall sign, they have a old green awning that comes off their garage, and it just says, on the fringe, Jim's Auto Repair, it's a small engine shop.
Those are nice, I like those.
If the barber said like Joe Farber.
Here we go, up on, up on the screen.
Those fringe signs.
We got awnings.
Damn, she's good.
Awning signs.
Yeah.
I can't make up any good, oh, wait, so long.
So like, this seems residentially-
That seems residential, that's exactly what I'm imagining.
Right.
Okay, but there's no sign on it.
There is, on the fringe, on the hanging down part.
Really, I can't?
It's white, it's right up above the pointer there.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
So I think it says, yeah.
And it's nice looking.
So like, I think that like, like, see the T for two example, see the T for two, Jim?
Yeah.
Right there, like, I don't think you want that in a residential, so like, you would, you would sizes in different zones?
Right.
But, I'm wondering, I mean, but, I could talk myself into a sign anywhere, pretty much.
Seriously, me too.
Yeah.
I'm finding the same-
I just like that.
And I don't really have the expertise with the signs to say, this size is allowable and this size is not.
Oh, wait, here we go.
That's, that's, this is the problem we ran into last time, because we got basically-
Jim.
I mean-
Here we go.
Oh, there you go.
Signs are bloody good.
You guys can't see it because of the lights, but, um-
Everyone's gonna have an opinion on it.
Yeah, see?
All right, well, I mean, I see-
Have widths and-
I mean, I don't see, so I think I can say comfortably that I wouldn't want a roof sign in residential zones.
Okay, roofs, even, even simpler than awnings, I love it.
A roof sign, uh, the big sign on top of Biggie's.
Which no one would know unless you flew a helicopter over or got the Google, right.
Here, do you want me to Google roof signs?
It's a sign which is located above or projected more than, no more than two feet above the lowest point of the eaves, or the top of the parapet wall.
Roof sign.
Or which is painted or fastened on a roof, so-
Roof sign.
Not in residential.
No residential, right?
Perfect.
No roof sign in any residential zone.
There's two boxes we've just checked on.
No.
Two whole boxes. Which one, which were?
What's, uh, I get confused about where these zones are, too. Which one's neighborhood business?
Neighborhood business is like Parsons Street, um-
N and N and, five-star, five-star on Parsons.
Parsons has Parsons Village, which has a big wooden sign out.
How about funeral parlors?
Yeah, Franklin.
Funeral parlors.
Yeah, Franklin Street, the barber.
No, I don't think Franklin is anymore. It's non-conforming.
Okay, what about five-star?
Some of them have frame signs on there.
Roof signs are a big projection, I, I definitely think that, um, you, you really want that only in, uh, what you want that.
Well, I think definitely in industrial and mixed use, I mean, I think like a mill building, or, um, you know, what's that chemical building that we did down in-
Okay, zoning map up on-
On the other end of town, like that.
On O'Neill Street.
Yeah.
That's industrial.
Right.
Okay, so yes is for industrial and mill, I agree with that.
Show me neighborhood business here, Jess.
Neighborhood business is right here, it's right here, you can't see, I can see, but you can't.
I can see them, and then there's one down on the bottom left there, oh, jeez.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, jeez.
I say yes highway business, no neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business, there's a couple of pockets of them off South Street. Um, it's mostly on the other side of Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Parsons, right in here.
Okay, so like, other side of Pleasant Street from like the mill buildings.
Right, across from the mill buildings.
Garages and-
Yep, those are all neighborhood business.
Convenience stores, they use a roof sign, I think sometimes tastefully.
But-
Can we say they can?
We totally can, that's what I'm saying.
Just have another sign that's still tasteful.
Remember, this is just an ordinance, so like, we're gonna do this, we're gonna send it to city council, we're gonna have an ordinance subcommittee meeting, and then a city council hearing for the public, so, I kinda feel like this is one of those things where we sort of make our best stab at it.
Yep.
And that if people in the community have really strong opinions, I'm totally open on any of these numbers.
So far, I have no resi- for roof signs, no residential for both, all categories. Yes for mill industrial, industrial, and highway business, the two that are in question.
Okay, so yes, hold on, industrial, mill use industrial, and neighborhood business?
No, hi, I have highway business.
Oh, highway business.
I don't know.
So the question now is downtown and neighborhood. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with an outright ban in those two zones, I think that there are places where they do use it tastefully, but like, I don't know that we need to allow that.
Totally agree.
Gentlemen?
Yep.
All right.
So we've got no, 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 yes, no, yes, yes.
So, wait a minute, not to throw a wrench, but like-
So ignore everything but-
I'm just, no, 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 I'm just trying to think if there's any roof signs in downtown.
Biggie's.
Wouldn't they be grandfathered, though?
They would.